Alderman Artwoods?
Here.
Alderman Curialy?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Sismarsky, not here. Alderman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here. We have a quorum. Next, I need approval of the minutes of May 9th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Next is a report and recommendation for lot consolidation for 140 Edge Brook Road, Director. All right. Okay.
They seem to be locked out. I have some great presentations I'd love to show you.
We'll go for a quick commercial, then we'll be right back. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the lot consolidation as presented.
Second. Any questions?
It's a pretty straightforward.
Right, yeah.
Belaborate over text our IT department over there.
Right. So if there's no questions, we can go for a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? No, motion carries. Okay. We're good.
Have it next week.
Next is the community park request for proposal. That's... There we go. You got it.
I did it.
Good.
The petitioners were here for that last request, and I just want to let them know that their item is approved.
Okay.
All right. All right. So we are on the community park RFP.
Right, correct.
Correct. Thank you, Chairman. So... This is the area of the proposed community park and the RFP related to it. This property is all under the ownership of the City of Wooddale. Back in 2013, the city had a vision plan prepared, and they created ideas for a town center park where residents and visitors could have congregate for special events, recreations, celebrations. And the plan at the time was proposed to include a fully enclosed pavilion, a public garden, adventure playground, country barn, and home, and trails. So this concept plan really was intended to be kind of a general framework for when the city wanted to move forward with future landscape and architecture design criteria. And so obviously, 11 years have passed, and since there, we have acquired some additional property in the area. The Alhira Community Center was acquired. The buildings that were public works have been demolished at this point, and so the land is really all under our ownership, vacant and ready to go. In addition, we have a proposed apartment development that is moving forward on the old SBT lot just south of City Hall. And so now would be a good time to move forward with the implementation, since all of the things in the area have kind of settled. And it's been 11 years, so it's probably a good time to reevaluate what elements that the City Council really would like in the park as of today. So in order to simplify the project, this property, this plan actually included land that was owned by the Park District, but in order to simplify it, we are proposing just moving forward with the city-owned land at this time. We have since realized that the western end of the property over in this area is in the flood plain. So we are planning to move forward with a topographic survey so we can determine how much of the area is developable. But for the most part, we believe it to be this area that's outlined in yellow. So with the idea that we wanted to move forward with the community park plan, we did send the vision plan to the Streetscape Committee, and they discussed it twice. They identified, went through all of the old items that were proposed in the vision plan and ranked them, high, medium, and low. And these, this was their rankings of what they would like to see. They did decide that it would probably be more appropriate, instead of an enclosed building, to move forward with an open pavilion. It could be used for festivals, outdoor events with a covering. It's not nearly as expensive as an enclosed event space, and there has been an event space constructed by the Park District that is available to be rented out. So there's no need to compete with that, so they are recommending an open pavilion. So what the RFP requires, we are looking for really a landscape architect type of consultant that could evaluate the current situation, what we've looked at, kind of the priorities identified by the Streetscape Committee, and put together a variety of things for us to review.
Director, we have a question. Go ahead.
Know how to move forward.
Have we looked forward to, I reached out to Wintrust before to put their name on a pavilion like that. Have we looked forward to any kinds of corporations or interests to help offset the precocitous?
So when I get to the budget section or the final steps, there is a requirement that they evaluate funding sources for this, look at the budget, what type of grants are available, how they could assist us with grants, and that would be something they'd consider at that time.
Okay.
So what we're looking for from a consultant in order to move us forward at this time is a minimum of three architectural conceptual site plan alternatives with costs. So this is kind of an initial blush at, hey, we believe these are the things that are appropriate, and here's three designs or three different elements. And then we would bring that forward to Streetscape and PCB in order to determine which elements and which plan were preferred. And then we would, they would move forward and prepare a detailed final site plan for the preferred design. They provide renderings. We're also looking for construction details, plans, renderings, photos in support of that final architectural master site plan, and any construction details for proposed structures such as buildings or a pavilion or gazebo so that we could go ahead and be very, almost ready to move forward with going out to bid for the structures as soon as we were able. We're suggesting they provide us with a proposed phasing plan, and here's where we're asking them to give us a proposed budget, some funding options, and provide us grant application writing services. So they would assist us to obtain the grants. There are scheduled meeting dates.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Before we move forward, so... We're going to be asking these design firms to put this all together or nothing?
No, okay, so I should... Thank you for asking that question. These are the deliverables that we are looking for once we enter into a contract with a selected consultant. So the proposal itself, they will have to do a fact-finding and assessment.
Mayor, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no.
Oh. Okay, go ahead.
They would give us a list of what they think might be included, and then they would give us a project proposal of how they would accomplish it, the timeframe they would accomplish it in, how much it would cost for them to provide these services. They'd provide a work plan and schedule, and then backgrounds on their staff, their availability and references. So that's what the RFP is asking for. But once we enter into a contract with a selected consultant after we've reviewed their proposals, these are the things that we would expect them to produce with the contract.
Go ahead. Mayor, did you have a question?
Yeah. So I was just going to say, because I called, right, the RFP, but this, normally when we do an RFP, it goes out to the selected list. We have engineers, and it's a little more specialized than what we have on the list. Then I asked, are we going to put it out there for everybody? And the answer was yes. And then, and then it's going to come forward. Everybody's going to get a chance. It's going to be a little different than the RFP we do for projects. So we'll be able, everybody will be able to get a chance to input.
Right.
Correct. So we will be posting it, so it will be public if anybody is out there looking for it. But we're also going to invite a handful of landscape architect firms by sending them a copy of the RFP. So basically, hey, we wanted you to be aware of this because you specialize in this, and you have excellent materials that you've prepared for other parks and other communities.
Yeah, no, it's all right.
Okay.
So the budget can be accommodated according to our finance director. We originally allocated $25,000. The topo survey, which we hope to move forward with soon, it will be under $10,000, and we really don't know how much it would cost. I am guesstimating, based on other plans, that it could be maybe $50,000. So all in, we could be $70,000, but the finance director has indicated we would be able to cover this if the board wants to go forward with it.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay. Next is the voluntary annexation for the lot consolidation for special use for playground and zoning variation for the new park, for the Wooddale Park District to be located at 111 East Foster Avenue. Director, you also have a presentation on that? We did a roll call on the...
No, you didn't do a roll call on this one.
Oh, so we had money on it. Okay, okay, I got it. So roll call on the community park request for proposal, then. Can we have a roll call in there, please?
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, so we can continue with the next one.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is a request that's being brought forward by the Wooddale Park District, and the Wooddale Park District is being represented this evening by John Markort, their executive director. Hello. Just FYI, today is John's birthday, and he is spending it with us.
Happy birthday. Nowhere else he'd rather be.
So this is the area that we're talking about. This is the existing Park District facility on Foster, and these are the lots that are the subject of this evening's meeting. These are currently unincorporated. The city corporate lines are these dotted lines. So it does, this project does involve an annexation of the properties that are vacant right now. The property that's in the city right now is Zoned R1, and the properties that are unincorporated have DuPage County zoning of R3, which is their single-family classification. The existing conditions for the site, as I mentioned, this portion is within the city, and the park building did receive a special use in 2012. And these five vacant, unincorporated properties were acquired in 2023 through a land transfer by Transwestern Development. These five lots were purchased by Transwestern in exchange for the Mohawk Park site out in Mohawk Manor along Route 83, where Transwestern was proposing industrial redevelopment. And so Transwestern acquired the five lots, they demolished the homes, and they seeded and sotted, seeded the land before they transferred it over to the Park District. The site itself is 4.3 acres, and the property currently has access along Foster and Hawthorne. The park that is being proposed by the Wooddale Park District involves pickle and tennis courts, 40-yard dash runway, which will be up here, a playground, and a picnic shelter, and accessible pathways, and of course, new landscaping. The Park District is requesting this evening voluntary annexation of the property, lot consolidation to consolidate the five lots and the existing building into a single lot, a special use for playground, and zoning variations for a couple of the accessory structures. So playground equipment is considered an accessory structure, and those are really designed for single-family homes. Like, we would, don't want sheds going over 15 feet tall. It doesn't accommodate playground equipment, so they are appropriately seeking a variation to increase the height of their accessory playground equipment to 18 feet 3 inches. Also, the fence height around the tennis and pickleball courts, those need to be higher, obviously, to capture the balls. They will be, there will be portions of the fence that are eight feet and 10 feet tall. Obviously, six feet is what is designed for residential applications. And so, of course, they're appropriately seeking a variation for the fence height. This shows the area where the playground will be 18 feet and the area of an eight-foot fence and a 10-foot fence. The parking for this facility, so our UDO does not have a parking requirement for parks, whether they're passive recreation or active recreation. There is an existing shared parking agreement between the Park District and the School District. So obviously, their buildings both front on these two parking lots, which are on the property of the School District, but the shared parking agreement allows both the School District and the Park District to park in either of these parking lots. So based on both buildings using these lots, our code requires 155 parking spaces, 144 standard and 11 accessible. There's only, I mean, I'm sorry, there are 155 parking spaces existing. The code would only require 151. That's for the School District and the Park District, based on the size of their buildings. And like I said, there are no parking requirements for the new park, but obviously, the Park District and the city want to be sure that there's enough parking there so that there's no overflow onto the residential streets. That might cause a problem. So the Park District did have a parking study prepared, and at peak use, they're anticipating 36 stalls could be used by people going to just the park. So in order to make sure that there are enough parking spaces in this lot, which is very close accessible to the park, the park staff will be using the parking lot to the west of their building to make sure these spaces are available for the park. And we don't see any issues at this point with parking. Regarding landscaping, site perimeter landscaping is required. The code requires 11 shade trees along the property lines with the residential uses. There is existing fencing and 23 shade trees along the adjacent property lines, so they already meet this requirement, but they are adding landscaping throughout the site for beautification and for the park. Regarding sidewalks, this is being handled very similarly to the way Arbor Park was handled with the Bensonville Park District. So the new sidewalk along Hawthorne is going to be installed by the city. This is similar to the, I'm sorry, did I say parking lot? Sidewalk will be installed by Public Works along Hawthorne. This is similar to over by Arbor Park. There was a sidewalk missing along Spruce. It's incorporated property, but the sidewalk hadn't been previously installed. Obviously, this property's been incorporated for quite some time, so we're going to treat it the same as that. This will be accommodated in the sidewalk budget for next year. Also, this is required to have a sidewalk once we annex it. So the Public Works Department is proposing to bid that and construct it with our sidewalk contract next year, and the Wooddale Park District will reimburse us for that. This is similar to how Bensonville Park District is reimbursing us for the Arbor Park sidewalk that we are constructing under our bid. So the CDC did recommend unanimously approval of this request, subject to a number of conditions. The main one is that the Park District staff will use the parking lot to the west of the building. They have agreed to this, and they understand it. The rest are really just standard conditions that we apply to all permits. So I am here to answer any questions, and Director Markort's here as well.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, with the condition as presented.
Okay. Alderman, Alderwoman Ames?
Thank you. So John, maybe this is a question for you. I had spoken with a resident on the northeast part of this regarding privacy of their yard, and I just want to know if that's been addressed. It seems like on the pictures, there's a lot of, I don't know what kind of trees, but something's going to be planted, but that's going to take a while.
Sorry, John Markort is over there. We're shifting some of the trees that were in the diagram. I know the resident I talked to, we're shifting the trees more to cover her property, particularly the pool area.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was addressed before everything moved forward, because I know that's a big concern with their backyard, swimming pool, and then you've got people literally playing sports, like, right in their backyard and...
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much for getting back to her. I appreciate it.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah. I know the other tennis courts, weren't they shut down because they weren't really being used anymore?
That was before my time, but I think it was partly because of COVID, they shunned down.
Okay.
And I think was never reopened.
I guess, just out of curiosity, because you guys are putting tennis courts in?
We're putting one.
One, oh, okay.
It's multi-use, though. It also has pickleball lines.
Okay, so it's a multi-use court?
It handles the overflow of four courts that are coming in.
Okay. Because I don't think the tennis courts were used that often anyhow. That's, I was just...
They needed work.
I mean, they're being used now as a community park.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, one of the other big drivers in the past was the cost to repair those courts was pretty substantial for the lack of use. So this multi-court is kind of the answer, based on, if I remember your facility study from when we were working together, that's what they were saying, one or two max.
Yeah, unfortunately, the tennis courts in the park are on steady land. No matter how many times I think, I mean, it would have to be probably a 300, 400,000 dollar project to really dig down here and provide an space, otherwise we'll keep on shifting the crack.
Second, Woods, folks?
Already did. Alderman Sismarsky, second. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
And again, happy birthday, John.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
If we would have known, we would have got a cake. Okay, so items to consider for future meetings, is there any? If there are none, but there is, there's a Shorty's Facade Improvement Grant Agreement coming up July 11th. Any other items considered? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Calling the Public Works Committee to order. Let the minute taker note that the same people are present. Roll call, please. Actually, you don't need a roll call, sorry. Approval of minutes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 9th, 2024. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Reporting recommendation. First one, approval of proposal from DOM Mechanical Industries Incorporated for the north plant aspirator pump repaired in amount not to exceed $29,188. That'd be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please. Sorry, Mayor?
So this aspirator pump, is this, is this when it was completed when we redid the plan?
Correct, yeah. The motor has gone on it. From all indications, the internal components are still in good shape. But usually, on a pump, the motor is one of the first things to fail.
How many years is this?
Nine, 10?
Yeah, approaching 10 years. So typically with pumps, you can get 20, 25 years plus, as long as you regularly maintain them, you grease them, you know. Sorry, glad, Mayor.
Mayor?
You say with regular maintenance, you do that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because you told me nine and told me 20 years, so just like, just, just...
Okay, any more questions?
I got one.
Yep. Alderman Messina?
This was kind of unexpected. Is this something we should budget for?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We budget $50,000 for each of our plants, just for, you know, minor upkeep like this, until, you know, larger improvements are needed.
Continue, Alderman Messina.
How many total aspirator pumps are there?
I believe there's one or possibly two. We only need them during the hot summer months to provide oxygen to the effluent in order to meet our permit limits, but I believe this may be the only one.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess, one question I was going to ask, is this kind of a fluke that this went out, seeing that you're saying they usually last a lot longer?
It's not uncommon for motors to burn out or need to be rebuilt, but the otherwise structure of the pump is in good shape, whereas if you replace the motor, you can get a good, long life out of it.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Morton Salt Incorporated for the fiscal year 2025 bulk rock salt purchase in amount not to exceed $67,249. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Sismarsky?
Yeah, Alderman, what was the tonnage we went through last year? I said Alderman, I'm sorry. Yeah, you got a promotion.
We...
Directly.
So during last year, we purchased 875.72 tons, and we used 530 tons in winter operations.
And this amount we're paying for is for how much?
This is for, I believe, the 130% amount, which we are able to purchase up to, which would be just under 1,000 tons, 910 tons. Which is more than we typically use in winter season. As of late, we've had some mild winters the past few years.
We'll be able to store it, because we got the new salt dome, so.
Yeah, we have about 645 tons on hand right now, so we're required to purchase a minimum of 560 tons, which should be enough to get us a good way through the season next year. year.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I saw the price was cheaper for next year than it was this year. And what about the, the brine, the beet juice? That's not part of this package, right? It's totally separate deal.
We purchased that separately.
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, an approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Bensonville Park District for the construction and maintenance of sidewalk on the south side of Arbor Park. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Randy in a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, did you have a question? Oh, roll call, please.
Is, is sidewalk gonna go all the way around the park?
So there's an existing sidewalk that ends just west of the park, so this will connect it from that point to the northwest corner of Spruce and Arbor, where the other existing, so it'll complete the loop around the park. And then the city will be completing their portion from the south along Spruce to Arbor.
Okay. No other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Davis Concrete Construction Company for the Spruce Avenue and Arbor Lane sidewalk installation project in an amount not to exceed $39,900. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, Elizabeth Drive Bridge Phase 2 Engineering, July 11th, streetlight installation, July 11th, pavement patching, July 11th, tree ordinance amendments, August, Prairie Fest purchasing versus renting equipment, August, ordinance changes for stormwater at Wooddale for Greener tomorrow, subcommittee merge, August. Do we have anything else? Okay, with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.